I'd like to call the Committee on Finance Administration to order. If you can all find a seat.
Robin, please.
And I think we now have video.
We do, we're live.
We'll take up the following items for approval. Action item 1A is the approval of the minutes for January 23rd, 2023 meeting. I'll move approval of item 1A. May I have a second?
A second.
Are there any changes or comments? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining. Action item 1A is approved. Now we'll address the policy calendar. Item 1B1 is a resolution to authorize funding for the establishment of a CUNY Security Operations Center. The university looks to establish the Security Operations Center to reduce the operational and reputational risks by identifying potential cybersecurity threats to the information assets of the university and its colleges and implementing strategies to mitigate these risks. The required equipment, software, and services can be appropriately obtained using existing centralized contracts through the State Office of General Services. Therefore, the university seeks authorization to request the dormitory authority of the state of New York to procure on behalf of City University advanced anti-malware and behavioral analysis software, firewall upgrades and deployment support of the same from Palo Alto Incorporated in an amount not to exceed $9,100,000 and a security information and event management system from IBM Incorporated in the amount not to exceed $1 million under the terms of the Palo Alto agreement and IBM respective OGS contracts using existing allocated capital funds. The combined authorization under this resolution will not exceed $19,600,000 over the period of five years following the adoption of this resolution, which includes a $10.1 million capital expenditure and a $9.5 million tax levy expenditure for five years of maintenance. Vice Chancellor for Information Technology and University CIO Seb Formosa is available to provide further background on this. Are there any questions? If there are none, I'll move approval of item 1B1. Professor Benton has a question.
The Security Operations Center and the cybersecurity, an area of concern that's been raised with faculty has to do with identity risks in the R, in the research foundation. In, there's a lot of transactions he's aware of, I've seen them too, where the, the protection of the identity of people that we employ, particularly students, is seems to be sometimes not, the system reveals more than it might, than it perhaps should.
Would you like to get more details about this?
I can provide you more details and perhaps in the process of doing what you're doing, you can try to address those issues.
Please.
I'll send you what David Gerizelme has, has brought up to us about this.
Please.
Okay. Any other questions or comments on this?
I have a question, just how are these, Palo Alto and IBM, were they identified through a bidding process?
So we did a best of breed runoff and we talked to a number of vendors. And so we should know that we currently have a pretty good relationship and a vast relationship with Palo Alto here. And we wanted to make sure that whatever decision we made was leveraging what we had already, the investment we already made. But we asked both vendors to basically set up a security operations center with four of the campuses. And we ran that for a number of months. We also did some investigative work with Forrester and with Gardner to understand who were the best to breed providers of these services within the industry. And as a result of the external exchanges and external information we got from the advisors and as a result of the tests we ran internally, real life, we turned on a SOC for a number of the campuses, which gave us tremendous insight. Those two were the key decisions and obviously the fact that they're both on the OGS contract helped us along the way to make, to make that decision.
And if I could add one more, as you, as the board knows, we recently had a cybersecurity issue and Palo Alto really, really did a lot to support the university in a ways that we learned a lot. And I think as, as the Vice Chancellor Formosa stated, by learning so much about that is the importance of having, in a system like this, having someone that, we don't have to educate about kind of our vulnerabilities because they got into a couple of us, they, they really saw some of the challenges of some of our schools and, and were able to really provide a lot of really valuable information as we were navigating the very difficult situation connected to the cyber attack that we recently had. So that was all thrown into that, into that decision-making.
Thank you.
Anyone, Trustee Berger.
Is this a program that will be mandatory for all the schools? This is going to cover all the schools?
Yes.
No opt-out, no?
Nope.
Okay. Anyone else? Before I move approval of, of this item, I'd like to apologize to Vice Chancellor Formosa. As an artifact of my 1950s-era education, I pronounced his last name as Formosa, it's Formoso. I move approval of policy item 1B1. Second. Trustee Berger, seconds. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions? Item 1B1 is approved. Item 1B2 is a resolution to approve the Personnel Matters Report of the Finance Administration Committee. As you know, and you've seen, I think, the breakdown of this information, university appointments go through an assessment and approval process prior to committee review, which may include personnel and budget committee recommendations, presidential approval, et cetera. The Personnel Matters Report reflects selected ECP actions that have been entered into colleges, by the colleges into the CUNY system of record between December 23, 2022, and February 5, 2023. Report contains a total of 25 ECP actions, including 10 interim appointments, seven regular appointments, four employee actions, three resignations, and one termination. Vice Chancellor of Human Resources, Dorian Gloria, is available to provide further background on this, should you require it. Is there, are there any questions on it? Yes, Mr. Hanna.
If we look at this report, we keep seeing over and over the same concerns that were raised at the previous meeting about that executive compensation plan positions are paid far too much, including some that are paid above the range, whatever that means. And if we have individuals that are getting paid above the range, why are they getting paid above the range?
Vice Chancellor Gloria?
Just to clarify, none of the four actions were for people who are above the range. There are times where people go above the range either because they've been in the position for a long time and have progressed beyond it. On very rare occasions, someone is hired above the range and that does require board approval.
You okay with the answer? Anyone else? I'll move approval of item 1B2. And I also want to say that among these actions is an interim appointment at Bronx Community College, a young man who is coming back to the CUNY system from Lehman College and a terrific addition to the team at BCC. So I enthusiastically move approval of 1B2. Do I have a second? Professor Benton? Seconds? If there's nothing else, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
Abstaining? You, you, I'm sorry?
Nay.
Nay, you're a no.
And you're a no. So you got two noes and you have three, oh, okay, got it.
1B2 is approved, thank you. 1B3 is a resolution to appoint Sarah Loop as Executive Legal Counsel, Chief Legal Affairs and Labor Relations Officer at Brooklyn College. You have read her, her resume, it's a very distinguished one. And Brooklyn College President Michelle Anderson is available to provide any further background, should you require it. I'll move approval of item 1B3. May I have a second?
Second.
Any questions? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions? Item 1B3 is approved. Item 1B5 is a resolution to authorize a contract with O'Donnell Learn and ISG to provide services to support rapid development of online academic programs across CUNY colleges. And I, Vice Chancellor, Executive Vice Chancellor Hensel is here. Perhaps you'd like to flesh this out a little bit, I'm sure you've...
I think we talked about doing the information item first, if that's acceptable?
Yes.
Because it relates to the resolution? And if I could invite my colleague, Associate Vice Chancellor Kim Segenthaler, up to do the presentation with me? I don't...
You're good. Kim, do you, where do you want to come down? This way, is that okay?
Sure.
There's plenty of space over here. And I think Tawanda's looking for a name tag.
The...
Yep.
Are the slides up?
Yeah, Roberto's got you.
I switched the page.
Yes, you did switch the page. Sorry.
Oops.
You're good. Wait, Jessa, do you have...
This is the R. This is the L. Yep. And then she's, we just, she's...
Got work on her.
Okay. She just didn't read the whole thing.
I'll just, I'll just...
She's doing this part, this is the online strategy.
Okay. Well, that's the thing we're vitally interested in. Who'd like to start?
Go ahead, Wendy, you're...
Provost?
No, the...
Oh, it's not up yet, oh, sorry.
And we can start talking while he's still loading it. So this is something we've been talking about for a while. And today bring to you a request that really relates to the next critical phase of CUNY Online. Oh, great. Thank you so much. So the first thing we wanted to tell you about is really why we're doing this. And, and that is an important question. You all know that CUNY's mission is one of access and it's to educate the whole people. And what we know is that there are significant barriers that exist to education for a very significant percentage of New Yorkers and beyond who fall in the category of adult learners. Things like full-time jobs, in fact, many of our students even have full-time jobs, children, long commuting distances, challenging schedules, there are, you know, a myriad reasons why someone would have a hard time attending class in person on a consistent schedule. If you look at the data, it, it's really quite striking. There's 2.84 million working age adults in New York City alone that don't have a four-year degree or higher. And the one statistic that really stuck out for me is we have more working age adults with a high school diploma that outnumber those with a bachelor's degree. So there's a great deal of capacity here and need for additional education. Nearly 700,000 people in our cities and the state at some college, but no degree. A critical solution to that is asynchronous online programming. More than 91% of adults have said that they plan to take some type of online course as a, as a degree seeker. 69% of those, 69% plan to enroll in a mostly or completely online program. If you look nationally, the data is absolutely clear on this point. While enrollment has been declining nationally, the one bright spot, the one area of increasing enrollment in higher education has been fully online programs. In 2020, 50% of all master's degrees were in online programs. And if you look across, like I said, the data, this is, is very clear that it's in this space. So that brings us to the question of where are we at CUNY in this space? Well, after a great deal of work, I want to say it was a great deal of work because we have some programs, but it was difficult to find them. What we discovered, we have accordingly about 140 fully online degree programs across the 25 campuses. And that's everything from bachelor's, associate's certificates, et cetera. Interestingly, that's only about 4.5% of CUNY's total program offerings. That is significantly behind other institutions of our size, either single institutions or systems, which tend to offer between 10 and 40% of their programs in an online format. Kim, I know you, you had the actual numbers here to compare to SUNY, for example.
Right, so SUNY has about 10% of their entire program portfolio online, but that represents 600 online programs.
So it gives you some sense of the scale to which we're, we're talking here. If you look at it, the, part of the challenge is that while we have 140, which is already behind, we have them in very inconsistent patterns across the 25 campuses. 18 campuses have one or more online programs, only six have six or more, and four have 10 or more. So very much concentrated in a small number of schools, particularly SPS, as you would expect, as the online branch of CUNY. Oops, there we go. So when I started, one of the important things to me that the chancellor and I talked about was really bringing CUNY Online into the Office of Academic Affairs. It had already been identified as a priority and the, the question was really how to take it to the next level in order to get CUNY where it needed to go. And so we began by conducting a market research study to identify national demand and gaps within CUNY. For the non-academics at the table, of which there are many, it's worth explaining how a typical program comes into being. Typically, faculty in one of the campuses would identify the interest and desire to create a new program. That would then develop the curriculum, which would then go through a full faculty governance process locally. It would have to be approved by CUNY centrally, and then it would also have to be approved by NICE. So it's quite a lengthy process, typically between two to three years from the time an idea is born to the time the program is launched. And that's even a fairly rapid escalation. The what, the idea that we had behind the national market study was to identify where there is unmet student demand in emerging areas and existing areas in the online market. And then to overlay that demand on CUNY to see where we have gaps. So for example, we might have an associate's degree, that's a two-year online program, but we didn't have the third and fourth year built out to reach a full bachelor's degree. And, and so that really was a match, a mismatch of what we had and what students were asking for. So we completed that national market study recently. Second priority in this initiative is really to build expertise. It requires a significant amount of expertise in instructional design and faculty development and in terms of the technical side to offer these programs. Again, there are pockets of that excellence across CUNY, it is not widespread. And so the, the idea was to use the national market study, to use this infusion of talent, and then rapidly incentivize online programs across CUNY. We have already identified a number of programs, Kim will talk about that. We started with where the market demand told us they existed and where they existed in a, in person on a campus, so that we could take what was already a fully formed curriculum and move it into the next level. Couple quick qualifiers, these are issues that have come up repeatedly for us that I want to make sure I address here. We are not creating a separate online entity. There is, CUNY Online is a concept, it is not a destination like Maryland Global Campus or Purdue Global. These programs will be owned and run by the campuses and developed by the faculty on the campuses, so there is no independent agency. Second, it was very important to us that we respected the rights of the campuses to differentiate. This is completely up to the faculty, whether they want to participate in this initiative. We have incentivized their participation, they have full control whether they engage or whether they don't engage, and that's an important point. And then finally, there is no long-term plan to have all of the resources at Central. It really is an escalation process. To provide that expertise, there will continue to be some in a long-term, in a strategic context, but the goal is for the campuses to build their own capacity in this space and as tuition comes in and our resources allow. So I'll turn it over to my colleague, Kim Segenthaler, and just point at me when you want me to advance the slide.
Okay. So this slide just gives you a little bit of a summary of our three-year strategy. And Wendy's already talked about some of the things from this year where we did the gap analysis, that was completed in December. It identified a number of programs. Again, the first focus was on existing on-ground programs with potential to add an online option. So, and Wendy talked about that these are not programs done separately, but NICE, it actually requires that the online option be identical in, in its curriculum to the on-ground program. So all that's happening is the addition of a modality in an existing on-ground program. We've identified a number of those and then reached out to the campuses to ask them about their interest in developing those specific programs. A number have said yes, particularly where we have campuses that are, as we would say, the, the single provider of a particular program. We've had some campuses that have committed to do that, and so we're beginning to work with them on mapping out a timeline and a time, and a framework to develop those programs. There's many other programs that are offered by more than one college, and so we're pulling together the provosts from those interested campuses to talk about strategy around that, whether we do that in a collaborative fashion or we have multiple programs or a single campus moves forward with that. But again, that's very strategic, again, being informed by the gap analysis, by the market research that tells us about the, the size of the demand as well as the particular interest area. We've now launched the new CUNY Online website and are beginning to execute the marketing strategy to elevate visibility of the 140 online programs that are now active. And so we expect to see that rolling out and increasing enrollment numbers for the fall semester, at the same time that we're developing additional new online programs. So that's the continuing work for the rest of this year. We'll have a second wave of programs that we identify, where we're going back to the campuses to talk about their interest in perhaps programs that weren't necessarily surfaced through the gap analysis, but where our in-depth local knowledge tells us that there is a, a market and a need. And so we'll be exploring those and again, moving those forward, developing and launching, and then a rinse and repeat for the next year with a goal of developing and launching up to 110 new online programs over the next three academic years.
So the challenge to doing that should be fairly obvious, which is we are doing a rapid escalation in a short period of time. And this slide gives you some sense of how long it typically takes to stand up and create this, these type of courses. It's worth saying for this audience, some of you are new to this presentation, this is not what we did during COVID. That was distance learning. This is very high-quality, very interactive, very engaged online learning. So it takes time and effort, and you have a sense there of, of the, the timing demands that we're facing. If you compare that to what we have in terms of capacity, you need instructional designers we have, and faculty instructors, online academic support and faculty development. And if you look at the numbers that we have, it's not adequate internally to meet that demand. We've got 16 FTEs, we have unlimited faculty, we have 10 for online academic support and 10 for faculty development support. Kim, you want to talk about what you have internally with CUNY Online?
Sure, within CUNY Online, we have, at this point, eight instructional designers. And that's it.
Although we have plans to...
We do have plans. So we are in, intend to hire up to 10 additional instructional designers to support the expansion of course development. We're going to do that in a, in a phased manner to make sure that we don't overstaff because as Wendy said, once we get through this accelerated burst of program builds, we're not going to need a, a large central staff. And so we want to be very, again, very strategic about how we staff up the office with permanent hires.
Go ahead, Kim.
Okay. So it's a very aggressive plan to advance the development of online programs. To enable us to do this, we executed an, we issued an RFP for a vendor who could provide services to us in the areas of instructional design, multimedia design, and faculty development resources. Again, to work with the faculty, to develop the online courses that again, are the same as their in-person courses in terms of content, and to prepare our faculty to teach well in the online environment. As we, as we work with the vendor, the goal is also that we will fully utilize our internal resources before we use the resources of the vendor. And so the RFP specified really that they would scale up and scale down based on our need. So we did not purchase a set amount, or we're not planning to purchase a set amount of services, but capacity to meet our needs. So where we have opportunity or we have need for additional support, then the vendor will come in and provide that support. Where we have the resources internally or we're able to build up those resources internally, we'll rely on those resources rather than those of the vendor. And the goal is that after the, the three years, maximum of three years with the vendor, all of those services will be internal to our CUNY campuses.
Which brings us to the RFP today, that's before you. And our hope is that you will approve that. Again, I think the best way to think of this is that we're in the startup phase. We're in a startup phase where we need an infusion of resources. We can't support those resources, sources long-term. And importantly, we will absolutely use every bit of talent that we have on campus before we turn to the outside provider. And at most, this is a three-year plan, we think it actually may be closer to two. But this gives us some flexibility to be able to move into the space that our students want and that we need to be competitive. And we'll stop there.
So I think this is good because a lot of our students are looking for ways to engage with campus in a way that works with their life, right? But I have a couple of questions in terms of student life. We know what it means when you're on campus in person, but what will student life mean for a student that is strictly online, more theoretically, but also practically for their student activity fee? Will they be paying the same amount as a student who is in person? Or are we going to rethink this whole idea of how we engage students who are online? Because a student activity fee is there according to what the students benefit from when they are in person, and that will obviously look different for an online student. So that's my concern. Unless we bring it down for them, depending on the, the services that they may not necessarily get.
Right. Well, you're asking a different question.
Mm-hmm.
In terms of student activity fee, I don't know how we handle that with online.
I think when you were speaking, you mentioned the staffing. We have an instructional designer, faculty instructor, online academic support, faculty development support. Maybe we should have a student life designer or something like that, but an additional person maybe to bring that in.
Well, those aren't needed to create the courses, right? That's, this is the curriculum. There will be an entire wrapper, set of wrapper... There will be an entire wrapper, set of wraparound services that serve students who are fully online to the same extent that they are served on campus. One thing to keep in mind, this is intended for the adult learner who either has no desire to come to campus and participate in that student life or has no ability to do so. So in other words, these are fully online, fully asynchronous programs. It really taps into a new set of students. It doesn't cannibalize the existing students. But what it will do, salamatu, which I think is great, is it will provide additional flexibility for in-person students as they can also sign on for a course here and a course here that's developed through these fully online programs.
Absolutely. So of course, they wouldn't have the same interest. So that's why I think when we will be thinking about their tuition, whatever they pay, I think it would be unfair to charge them that activity fee if they have no interest in activities or if they wouldn't be benefiting from it. So maybe additional research to gauge their interest or what are different additional services they will need? And if they are charged, we charge them according to that. Of course, if Biden were just not moving to no tuition, but that's another conversation.
I will only say, we have 140 of these programs now, and there's already a structure in place. So that's something that we can look at and evaluate it more carefully. Absolutely.
Can I, I mean, one other thought, I think is that it's an excellent thing, the point that you bring. I mean, a couple of things. The fact that the students are fully online, it might not mean that they don't want to participate in other parts of student life. I mean, this is mostly master student, right? So I mean, this is, think about how master students sort of participate in the life of the university, but you could see them benefiting from career services and, or different kinds of services. They will still be open to participate in student life in clubs, like graduate students do right now. And, and so we need to sort of think, and I think also as we evolve, as we have learned about individuals participating in more services and programs online that are not just courses, right? That that menu might also open up in a way that's different from what we have now. So I think that you bring a very, very key question, but I do want to make sure that we, that keep in mind that those, in this case, we're focusing on master students, right? For these programs, but they do participate in the life of the university. They, they, and they might be, you know, right now they belong to clubs, and the fact that they might not want to take most of their classes, I mean, they might not want to participate on some of those things. So we need to sort of think about that. So it's a very thoughtful question.
Just to support your point, I was recently at SPS and spoke with their students, and the one thing they wanted was more interaction and community and engagement. So I think it does depend on the...
Funny add also.
I'm sorry. Did you have another question?
Yeah. One more thing. And it's still about student life. Our SPS representatives in our different organizations, they are looking for more ways to interact, but it's not, the university is not designed to function online. So in that conversation about student life, we really need to see how it's going to adapt to these new changes.
Totally agree with you.
They're all good points.
That's absolutely right.
Professor Benson?
Thank you. Two questions. One is, where does this agreement take us with respect to the intellectual property issue? It seems that this, I looked at the, at the RFP itself, and it seems to, on the one hand, say that the university claims intellectual property ownership, which is good. And then it subjects, it says that the university limits its own ownership based upon its policy, which then says that the creator owns it if the creator made it. And so, I mean, it seems like this is saying, yes, it certainly doesn't belong to you, the contractor, but the university in its exercising of its rights respects the rights of the creators. But the devil is in the details, and I, I have some concerns about in voting for this. And am I implying that in, whatever the solution is that's inside of this is the end result that's going to be presented to the faculty as a fait accompli?
Well, first, let me say, in voting for this, it has nothing to do with the intellectual property. It has to do with our ability to move forward with the capacity to create these things. Your point is absolutely correct, which is it's a bit of a mess because our policies were not built for modern times with these type of program developments. And so what I came in and inherited were 25 different approaches on 25 different campuses to this question. And so what we've agreed to do in order not to stall the development is to continue to honor the campuses' intellectual property agreements for this first phase while we work to create a better intellectual property. That will go through faculty governance with you and be part of that conversation. It's pretty clear to us at this point, we will need to bring some revisions to the Board of Trustees' policy on intellectual property to make this make sense. But the world has changed so much since that intellectual property agreement was drafted for this type of work, that it really is imperative that we do a conversation with faculty and talk about intellectual property rights. But for the moment, it's the status quo.
Okay. Well, my second question relates to the, what it is that the students themselves want. I mean, I heard in this presentation, we've learned about the demand of this, and we learned about the existing program. What I didn't hear was that we're inquiring of the students, the existing students and the potential students as to what they want the modalities to be like. And I understand that your first priority here is to create the fully online asynchronous version because if a student wants that, you have to be able to have this. At John Jay, the Senate and the Student Council are joining together to propose a student entity that would be, in a sense, representing or a club of the online students, including the partly online students, so that we can begin to engage with them about what they want on an ongoing basis and give them a forum to frame what it is that they want. But I, in, I want to support this, but I do bring my vote to this with a lot of reservations about what we're doing about the students we have now who absolutely want online modalities, but they want it in combinations and structures that, you're just, you're, this is all about developing the totally asynchronous. And I would have loved to have heard you say, "At the same time, we're going to be adapting these wonderful asynchronous tools," and, you know, "so that we can use them in hybrid classes, and we can use them in flipped campus classes and so on." I know you're allowing that to happen, but the existing students, and I, I mean, I started the first, I directed one of the earliest graduate online programs, fully online, that we have more than a decade ago. The students want hybrid as well as fully online opportunities. And they want flipped classes as well as asynchronous classes. And, and the existing students would really appreciate it if we'd signal to them that that's what we're trying to do. I'm not going to withhold my vote, but I'm withholding my enthusiasm.
What's a flipped class?
A flipped class, this is, the, this is where...
Or you don't flip your vote, or you flip your enthusiasm?
Right, yeah, no, I mean, I did this. We developed an, a fully online version of the Capstone course for the Master of Public Administration, because it was a fully online program, and so we needed to have a fully online approach to that. But the faculty teaching the Capstone realized that the stuff we developed was really cool and that what they could do is to replace some of the classroom lecture time with assignments to engage with this online material at their leisure, and then come to class and spend more time in creative engagement with the faculty member about solving the problems that they, that are coming up in their projects. It was great. And so basically, I did less lecturing in class and more of the delivery of the material in the online format so that I was more available to the students, to work with them on what they were presenting as their projects.
So lots to answer in your question. I want to limit my response just out of respect to the committee. But I'll start by saying, the issue before you is the RFP. Students represented from the University Student Senate sat on the committee and voted in favor of this RFP. So we did consult with the students, and there was a representative from UFS as well. So the faculty also signed on to this. Look, students are voting with their feet. Whatever you think they want, they have different ideas about that. And we are in complete agreement. We should have all of those options so that students can learn in a format that best suits their style. This is 100% complimentary with that. As we give faculty development to faculty to develop these courses, they can turn around and develop that in different places. The modules that are developed can be flipped to use in hybrid courses or to be used in a different type of online course. None of that's inconsistent. The only question is where we begin. And in order to begin in a place to capture new students who are currently precluded from participating because of their personal circumstances, we have to have a completely online program from beginning to end in order to allow them to matriculate. So it also relates to enrollment, as you know. But I 100% believe all of these things affect all of the different types of teaching that we do in an extraordinarily positive way.
Thank you.
Our vice chair has a question. I, I'm going to vote for this, and I appreciate your frankness. This is complicated, and it's happened very quickly. And it would be great to have five years to plan this out, but in the competitive world we're in, we must do this, and it's welcome to the real world. The only point that I really want to make is, look, this, join the 21st century. Maybe we were a little late, but you know, CUNY is unique. The distance between colleges isn't as great. There are arguments to defend maybe being as slow as we were, but that's irrelevant. What I really want to say is, this is additional reason to re-triple our efforts for our, in on-campus classes, and to be as innovative and as forward-looking, and frankly, to encourage as many students who want to do that. Because I will speak for me, and I think I'm speaking for others, that if you had the choice, forget the personal circumstances, which we will respect, and we're going to do all this, I assume we're going to vote for this. The on-campus experience is valuable, if not more valuable than ever, and we should do everything we can to encourage students to take advantage of that. And we can't lose that while we're running hard to set up a brand-new system here that's going to have mistakes and it's going to have faults. You know, this is, this is not easy stuff, so that's...
I just want to add, that is absolutely the intention. This is doing more with more, not doing more in certain areas. It's absolutely critical to a robust environment. We are launching an extensive student success campaign, and most of that will relate to the in-person student, although we're also exploring it in the online context. I can just assure you, I've answered this question many times. This is in addition to, not in lieu of, in any sense of the phrase.
Is there anyone else? If there is nothing further, let me thank you, the Office of Academic Affairs and the faculty for this important collaboration. For those of us who at the university have been watching this for a while, we've been frustrated for a while, but we see real progress here. We see a plan here. We see some thought and some execution, important execution. And that's going to take us a long way. So again, thank you very much for this. If there is nothing else, I'm going to move approval of policy item B14, which I mistakenly labeled B15. And I know some of you were, wanted to point that out to me. But I eventually catch up. So I'll move approval. Do I have a second? Is there any, anything else? All in favor? Opposed, abstaining? This item is approved. Thank you. With no more items on the policy calendar, Section 2 is information items. We have three information items. First is Item 2A, the fiscal year 2024 State and City Budget Update. And Catherine Abada, University Budget Director, and Ferdinand Verlay, Capital Budget Director, will provide a brief presentation.
Good afternoon, everybody. I'll get started while we're pulling up the presentation. So we wanted to just first start with a brief reminder of the timeline. So the state released the executive budget on February 1st. Next actions, well, and we also testified in Albany in front of the legislature on February 27th. Sorry, let me do that. And then the next actions that will happen is that later this month, the Assembly and the Senate will both release their one-house bills. We can get an idea of what they will be thinking about for the final budget. And then April 1st is the, is the date that the state budget gets enacted. And then on the city side, the city released the January preliminary budget in late January. And next steps there is that the university will testify in front of the city council on the budget impact on CUNY. And then in April, the city executive budget will come out, followed by the adopted budget in June. And there are two more points in the year where there are changes to the city financial plan. That's in September, and that mainly is for capital items. And then in November, a city financial plan is released, and that's mainly for technical adjustments. So there are changes in the city budget throughout the year on a quarterly basis. On the state side, it is very rare that, once the budget is adopted, there are any changes. So I'd love a look at the numbers. Is that for, on the operating support side, as you can see, for the senior colleges, there is an increase in, of $30.4 million in operating support. That is mainly funding for our fringe benefit cost increases. That amount, and we'll talk about some of the items in a few minutes, and that amount was offset by some funding items that were not continued in the executive budget. And then on the city side, the overall picture is for state support, that $1.2 million decrease that you see there, that was one-time childcare funding that did not get continued into fiscal '24. And that was to expand capacity at campuses that do not currently have childcare centers. And so that $1.2 million is being used at Queensborough Community College to develop a childcare center there. And then on the city side, there is a net change of $5.9 million for the community colleges. And that's a combination of increases mainly for mandatory needs, offset by decreases. So City PEGS program to eliminate the gap, which is budget reductions for our community colleges. And then there are also some program items that were not, have not yet been continued in the fiscal '24 financial plan. This next table is a comparison of our budget requests and the budget proposals that we now have. So you can see, we requested about $209 million for programs. We requested $111 million for strategic priorities. We got $40 million... We got $40 million. That's the $40 million in one-time state funding that was provided in the current year. And we asked for that to be baseline, and we're very pleased to see in the executive budget that it has been baseline. The state, as I mentioned, also provided $35.9 million for fringe benefit cost increases. Our total mandatory request was $98.8 million. So as you can see, there's $63 million of unfunded mandatory needs costs that will increase next year for which we do not currently have funding. That other item of $3 million is additional TAP waiver support. In the current year, we got $59.6 million to cover the TAP gap, which is that difference between our tuition rate and the maximum TAP award. The estimated increase for that for next year is $3 million, and that was added to our senior college budget. And so this last line, you can see the total numbers out of a $419 million request. What is proposed currently is about $79 million.
Yes, trustee.
Oh, sure. No, I'm not done, but I can answer a question.
Why don't we better finish our presentation?
Okay, sure. So the highlights of the state budget on the senior college side, again, the fringe benefit funding, the additional TAP waiver funding, the $40 million in operating support that has been baseline. And then there's a couple of programmatic items that have also received continued funding, you know, that are listed here. There's three of them, $1.5 million for the Wrangle Infrastructure Workforce Training Initiative at City College, the First Impressions Youth Collaborative Initiative at the law school, and then some additional funding for the CUNY Leeds Program, which provides services for students with disabilities. On the community college side, what we requested from the state and what was included in the executive budget was a continuation of the 100% funding floor for the community colleges. So this is in lieu of the regular formula that the state uses to fund community colleges, which is a per FTE funding formula. If that funding formula had been used, the state estimates that we would have lost $59 million for the community colleges. So it is extremely helpful, based on our enrollment losses, to have this funding floor maintained again this year. There was a change, however, to legislation around the funding floor, and there is a proposed new requirement that in order to get the full fully funded amount, the university has to submit a plan to the state as to how, on the community college side, we will be able to operate in balance without the funding floor going forward. So that that is a signal that perhaps the funding floor is is not going to be continued in the out-years, and just a very important point to note. The state executive budget does include a tuition proposal. I know we talked about this at the last meeting. It included legislation that said that the university can increase tuition by the lower of either the Higher Education Price Index or 3%. Currently, 3% is the lower of those amounts. The HEPI rate is at is at about 5.2%. The state estimates that a 3% increase would generate $31 million for the senior colleges and additional operating support. And while the state language just covers the senior college, just a point to note is that a similar increase at the community colleges would generate about $7 million in additional tuition revenue. Another item that is proposed in the executive budget that impacts both CUNY and SUNY is a requirement that the colleges would provide access to medication, medical abortion prescription drugs for all students enrolled. The trustees of both institutions would have to come up with a uniform plan that would provide the process, whether it's directly providing such medications or or directing students as to where they could get access to to these types of medications. So moving on to the city preliminary budget, the preliminary budget included additional pegs, reductions in the January financial plan. We there were reductions in the November plan of $13.7 million, and those grow to $19.5 million in fiscal '24. There was an additional $4.6 million peg in the January plan. That grows to, I'm sorry, $4.8 million, which grows to $9.6 million in fiscal '24. And just to give you a picture of what our pegs are looking like, including the amounts that have been applied this year and pegs from prior plans, in the current year, at the community colleges, we have $39 million in reductions, and those grow to $49.7 million in fiscal '24. On the city side, we do get some mandatory cost funding, so funding for collective bargaining, fringe benefits, and building rentals. So that, of course, is very helpful. So that's that's everything on the operating side. I can either answer questions or turn it over to Ferdinand for capital.
Look, so we haven't completed cap, a discussion of capital yet?
Not yet.
Why don't we do that, and then we'll take questions?
Okay. So CUNY's capital program totals $5.3 billion in state and city capital funds. The governor's executive budget proposes $642.7 million in new capital funding and re-appropriates $3.4 billion allocated but unspent from prior years. The city's preliminary 10-year capital plan reflects $1.2 billion in funding for CUNY, and CUNY has received $111 million in new funds since the city adopted its budget last year. We'll return to that in a couple of slides. CUNY's five-year capital request was $5.5 billion, as you can see here, including $983 million in the first year of that plan. The governor's exec FY24 exec budget proposes allocating $642.7 million in new capital funding. New allocations for the senior colleges total $484 million, which is a decline over the prior year of approximately $395 million, as you can see, the combination of the 40 and the 435 there. On the other hand, thanks in part to the city's commitment to helping CUNY's community colleges, the state will match $119.7 million of city funding received since its budget was adopted last year, an increase of $74.9 million over the prior year. And lastly, the governor's FY24 proposal holds the budget for administering the capital program steady over the prior year and did not earmark funds for the School of Labor and Urban Studies. That's the reduction for that.
For the purpose of clarity, maintenance means maintenance. It doesn't mean anything else, right?
Right.
Okay.
Yes.
That sounds like a dumb question.
No, no.
But actually, it didn't always mean that.
Understood. So turning to the city's preliminary budget, that reflects a total of $1.2 billion for CUNY. The vast majority of these funds are reallocations from prior years that are not yet in a contract. The key highlight of note in the city's budget was the inclusion of $96.2 million to meet CUNY's greenhouse gas reduction goals mandated by local law 97. And $15 million, as you can see here, noted for City Colleges Life Science Initiative. And so lastly, on this slide, we have the highlights of operating and capital budget. So for operating, on the senior side, my colleague Kathy mentioned the $40 million in operating support, $35.5 million in fringe benefits. Operating for community colleges, the funding for maintenance mandatory costs, the state's maintenance of a funding floor. And on the capital side, as you just heard me remark, $484 million of new funds. And for the community colleges, oh, and the $484 was for seniors. And the community college side was $119.7 million state match, which includes $96.2 of new funds for community colleges to reduce greenhouse gases. Thank you all very much.
Okay. Now, I believe trustee Boya had a question.
All right. So I have a question about the executive budget tuition proposal. It says that the state estimate that the tuition increase will generate an additional $21 million for tuition revenue. What are the different criteria that are used to determine that that will generate 21 $31 million more dollars?
So it's looking at enrollment by the various categories, so full-time undergraduate, part-time undergraduate, at the graduate level, and and doing the math.
Okay. May I?
Yes, fine.
Okay. So the reason I asked this question, I thought I thought so that the criteria was potential increase in enrollment. I just want to say that the students in general do not think that a tuition increase would increase enrollment. We think that it's very counterintuitive to be advocating or even imply a tuition increase while we are looking to increase enrollment, because students are looking for more opportunities to make their lives easier, and this ultimately does not make life easier for people.
Okay. Mr. Cologne?
Yeah, I'd just like to make a comment.
On the subject?
On the subject of 3% tuition increases. So when we talk about tuition increases, a lot of students are low-income, and, you know, they have they have a lot of costs to pay already. For example, a CPR, let's say when we talk about, they're not just dealing with like a 3% increase, they're also dealing with higher inflation rates, they're dealing with they're dealing with with food stamps being removed. So when we talk about a 3% increase, they're not just dealing with a 3% increase, we can't call that modest. They're dealing with everything else on top of a 3% increase. And when you're dealing with everything else, and then you're dealing with a 3% increase, education becomes more of a luxury because food becomes more of a necessity. Your life livelihood becomes more of a necessity. So it's just not it's not modest. And I believe that that, you know, we can get this funding from 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 government. It shouldn't be put on students who are already having a hard time dealing with everything else that's going on.
That's right. Trustee, perfect.
Yeah. Just so I'm clear, because I understand that over the last several months, we've had the city has instituted savings of approximately $49 million in the pegs. And it seems that that says that's been baseline. That means that their savings is a $49 million reduction in what we're getting in terms of city funding. I mean, in simple terms, and I can only think in simple term. You know, is that an accurate summary of where we are with the city?
Yes, for fiscal '24.
That's what peg means, Mr. Berger.
But it's been baseline in. I mean, it's not.
Yes, permanent.
For a minute.
Lovely.
Yeah. Mr. Hammond?
So three questions, the first of which is about the tuition increase. So we talk about the 3% tuition increase increases, if it's going to balance CUNY's budget. But one thought that needs to be taken into account is, with all the other expenses that students will have, a lot of students only attend the number of classes that they can afford. So if the tuition increases, how is that going to affect enrollment? And how are we going to be able to balance the budget if we lose students because they simply can't afford to go to CUNY anymore?
Your second question?
The second question is about the operating request versus the proposed. Why are we getting about 20% of what we requested for the operating budget?
Good question. Your third question?
Why are we losing mayoral funding?
Wish I could answer that.
Could answer the first.
You could answer any of the three questions.
I can't. Trustee Cortez Vasquez.
On a on a different subject. I'm going to go to the state side. And I wanted to go to funding for the funding floor by the state. Let me see if I understand that. All right, so there is a cost per student, and that'll become the funding floor, and that's what they would reimburse us, but we would have to. Every year will be a zero base, right? Is that is that what I'm if that's what I'm hearing?
For the community college, right?
For the community colleges.
Right, the the right, right, for the community colleges. So so every year, we have to go and start at zero. And how does that how does that formula work? Is it per student? I it wasn't clear. I mean, I I like the initial way that they're, that is. I don't know that I I understand the rationale for the future direction for it.
I mean, up until the pandemic, this is for the last couple of years, we were funded on a per FTE basis for the community colleges. And I think that that number is right, 2,997, what was which was the last year that we were funded that way. But because because our enrollment fell so severely, what the state did is they allowed us to have a funding floor. So they held steady the amount that we received in 2020?
And that's regardless of student?
Yes. So that's what they've been doing.
So that's the floor we always have.
Thankfully, for the last couple of years. If not, if they went back to this whole FTE, we'd lose $59 million. Yeah.
But so that so it's it's zero base, so it's not zero base. That is always the floor that we will go moving forward, and then it increases beyond that?
I think what the state is suggesting with their language is that they don't want to do the floor anymore because they they're holding back 20% of that and asking us to develop a plan of how we how we would rely not having the floor.
That's what I've got to start with.
Yeah, so that's right. And right, right, so this is the state executive budget right right now. So we're still, obviously, we still have some time, but that's really what they're suggesting through the language, that there seems to be, they want to go back to the to the FTE formula as opposed to giving the floor.
Professor Benton, and then vice chair, sunshine.
I still don't get it.
Okay, I have a question about the TAP gap.
Yes.
My understanding, and you can confirm it if I'm, is that if a student is eligible for TAP, then the student, the the tuition increase is covered by TAP
Yeah.
in two ways. It's either covered by TAP, particularly for the community colleges, or for the senior colleges, to the extent that tuition is greater than TAP, we're getting this $3 million, which makes up the difference, but it's added to our operating budgets. So in as long as they they're eligible for TAP, the tuition increase wouldn't affect them.
Yes, that's correct.
However, we have students who run out their eligibility for TAP for various reasons, having to do with their lives and circumstances. But last year, the governor said that the governor was creating part-time TAP. And I have never heard about how, I mean, it seems to me there'd be a lot of people who would like to do part-time TAP because they can only commit part-time of their life to going to college, but I've never heard it actually how it happens. I've never I've never seen the the rollout of this. Is has it rolled out?
It has, yeah. Yeah, so it rolled out this fiscal year.
Go ahead.
No, I was I was going to say before that, but it has, and I forget the number of students.
And we can bring back numbers to the board in terms of particularly important for the community colleges, too, which have a lot more traditional part-time students.
So we can answer that off-line.
Good, in the future, great.
For all the members of the committee, right?
Great, good news.
Okay. Okay. Trustee, sunshine.
I was similarly, what, how many students is this effect? You know, between TAP and PEL and the TAP gap and the soft TAP, I'll call it, how many are affected by this proposed tuition?
Well, if we if we use the numbers that we have now, right, correct me the latest percentage, it'd be between 65, 68% of our students do not pay, you know, any tuition when you consider TAP and PEL combined, right? If you think in this case, the community college will still be under the TAP limit, even with the 3%, right? So the community college, I think, 70, 75% of the students probably would not see, I mean, the increase would be paid by TAP or PEL. But for the system, I think it'd be like 65, correct me from.
I think it's like 68.
68, okay.
Yeah.
68. Yeah. Yeah, but this is this is on the grab, right? This is on the grab.
Yeah.
So the estimate for the, just in terms of dollars, so the 31, the estimate from the state was that 81. the state was that 18 million of that would be covered by financial aid. And, you know, I don't know if that's helpful in terms of just having a sense of the dollar.
Actually, just TAP, right?
Just TAP.
Yes.
Thank you. Sorry, just TAP. And that doesn't include PEL.
Let's try to use an economy of words in our questions and answers because we've got to get moving.
All right. I wanted just to point out the 35% that may be comprised of international students, undocumented students, and other out-of-state students who may pay tuition. And we may have the risk of losing 35% of that student population. So my thing, my only comment is we need to support them as well because that number is also very important.
Thank you. Is there anyone else? Okay. That concludes then the information item. Next on the agenda is to go into executive session in accordance with sections 105A and 105C of the State Open Meetings Law. Accordingly, I move we go into executive session. May I have a second?
You're doing something?
All in favor? Opposed? Abstaining? We are in executive session.